Okay, we are going to Sam's.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're going to call meeting order. And we will pull this report this time for anyone who would like to speak. We open the floor. The board is here, we're going to move on. We have the approval of the agenda. Don, do you have anything?
No, sir.
Miles on here, Pete, do you have anything, Adam?
Nope.
Nope, Julie? Okay, I will move for approval of the agenda.
So move.
Motion made.
Seconded.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side. Motion carries. The consent agenda, means everybody had a chance to look over everything on here. Any questions?
There was just, there was just one there, Jenny, and I went out looking at my thing here. It said like transfer, transfer of something. When we transfer, if we could, transferred from what to what?
Well, I'd have to see.
Yeah, I know, but it just says transfer on.
On the claims list?
Yeah, on the last one, I don't know if it was the last one you sent out. And I don't have time to find it, but.
Do you have the list, Barb?
Yeah.
More than likely, it was a transfer from the general fund to the fire ambulance, because I did make two of those.
It might have been on that last one you sent, too. But anyway, that's, that's, I would, it just says transfer, and then it had a number, and.
Okay, well, Barb can find it before the end of the meeting, and we'll, we'll get you that answer.
Okay, there's not any questions, we'll, I'll add again, a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Is motion made?
Seconded.
Motion seconded. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Now, we proceed to vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side. Motion carries. New business, resolution approving bonds.
That would be Shannon.
Good evening, Mayor members of the council, Shannon Sweeney from David Drowne Associates. The resolution that's included in your packet is actually to initiate the process for selling bonds to fund your 2017 street and utility reconstruction project. So we've put together a plan for finance and some recommendations. As I mentioned in my cover letter, we had included the project in a PFA funding application. We get on their intended use plan, scores points, and then if we're lucky enough to score high enough, we can use their funding for projects like this. PFA does not have funding at the moment. They won't until the state legislature decides the budget for most of the local, or most of the state programs, including the PFA. And so, you know, ultimately, you'd have a couple of different options. One of waiting to see if, one, the program is funded, and two, if you score high enough. Or two, the second option is to issue general obligation bonds to fund the project, as we've done on past projects. Portions of the reconstruction project wouldn't be eligible, more than likely, including street restoration and that sort of thing, and street construction costs. And so ultimately, if PFA funding were available, we'd probably have to carve out a piece that we'd be borrowing for anyway. I did an analysis based on PFA funding the entire project, just to see what the difference is, because if PFA does fund a project, we are required to pay prevailing wage. We did bid this project both with and without prevailing wage, and ultimately, it was determined that, you know, if we were eligible for PFA funding, we'd save a little bit in annual payments, roughly $4,000 a year. But again, the program has no funding at this point, and we don't know if it will be funded, and if it is, whether or not our project would score high enough. And so, I believe the engineer's conclusion is that we can't count on that funding program at this point in time, and so, we've, we've brought forth a plan of finance that would include the issuance of general obligation bonds to cover the entire project cost. Generally, we find our clients like to lock in the interest rate on financing soon after awarding a construction contract. You've awarded a construction contract, so you've bound yourself to build this project. Ultimately, you know, folks tend to want to lock in the rate on the finance at, you know, the earliest convenience, and so, what we've suggested is we choose to move forward with issuing $1,480,000 in general obligation bonds. You know, we've recommended a 20-year term, similar to what we've done in the past. They'd be callable, which means. 20-year, yep. Callable, 2-1 of 24. We do recommend using a competitive sale process, where we prepare an official statement. Folks are allowed to bid on the purchase of your bonds. We present those bids at your next meeting, in order for you to review, and then determine if you want to award the lowest bid provided. And then you would close, which means receive the money. Well, I should add that on April 3rd, which would be the bid date, they'd be presented to you for award, and at that time, the interest rate would be fixed. So it's not a locked-in interest rate until we've received bids, which would be on April 3rd, under the schedule that we're presented. You would then close on or about May 1st. So you'd have interest rate fixed on April 3rd, you wouldn't have to take delivery of the money till May 1st, which is closer to when construction is likely to start. And so you wouldn't be paying interest on the money until you closed, which is on May 1st, so. We do recommend purchasing a standard and porous credit rating. That credit rating, oh, well, it costs an estimated, I think, $9,500. Ultimately, that rating will save us tens of thousands of dollars in interest, because it will, it will encourage additional investors to bid on the purchase of your bonds. They will bid at a lower rate, because you have a credit rating that they understand, you know, and it helps them value, it helps them to determine the appropriate interest rate they should offer on your bonds. And so, if we didn't think it was worth it, we would not recommend a credit rating, but in this instance, we do think it's well worth the price. So, the resolution, well, as part of the packet information, I included a preliminary debt service schedule, looks like this. It talks about sources and uses of funds, what the $1,480, how that's split out between the street and utility reconstruction project, including engineering and contingency, as well as the cost of issuance for the bonds. The projected interest rate is just over 3% at this point in time. Well, ultimately, again, it's not fixed until we've actually received bids, which would be about a month from now. Debt service payments are about $100,000 a year. We're expecting that we're going to make those debt service payments from multiple sources, including a tax levy of about $28,000 on average per year. That's roughly 4.7% increase over what we levy today. We have water and sewer fund revenues contributing each about $10,000 per year. Your water utility is in much better shape than your sewer utility, as far as being able to afford the contribution. We may have to look at some adjustments, as we've, as we've discussed in the past, on sanitary sewer rates. We also have a significant storm sewer contribution of $44,000 a year towards this debt service payment, because much of the work is storm sewer related. And lastly, we have special assessments, that if folks choose to be specially assessed over time, would pay about $10,000 a year. That money would be collected and used for the debt service payments on this bond issue, so. The resolution in your packet, again, initiates this process for a competitive sale of bonds. Tells us to prepare an official statement, which is a document that describes the city's ability to repay the debt. We use that document to send to the credit rating agency, for them to evaluate the city's ability to repay the debt. And it's also then sent out to the investment community to make bids with regard to the purchase of your bonds. So, more than happy to discuss our recommendation materials in your packet, so please ask any questions you care to.
What is the interest rate on bonds, how's that been trending?
It's been fairly stable the last couple of months. We did see it increase towards the end of last year, but since that time, I, you know, 3% to 3.5% is kind of the interest rate that we've seen on this kind of a term. Still very low compared to historically what we've paid, and so, there really hasn't been a ton of municipal sales yet. You know, the construction season is just starting to come about. I think you bid it at a very good time. I think not having a lot of bonds on the market is good for us, because folks, you know, are interested in still buying bonds, so. Stability is what we've seen for an awfully long time at about this interest rate, so. It's not to say I have a crystal ball, but I've seen nothing that tells me it's going to skyrocket by any stretch, so.
So on your estimation, is this going to be a lot higher than our project from last year?
No, about the same, as far as interest rate, yeah. Yeah, it probably trended a little bit less, you know, but I bet it'll be very close.
Any other questions, sir? Why is it we need a motion, a motion approving the bond sale? And are we also approving going ahead with the standard and porous?
Yes. Ultimately, that's really the only commitment you're making this evening, is for, to start the process to issue bonds. The only financial commitment that would really be made is we would, you know, be initiating that process between now and your next meeting to have a credit rating. If you didn't have a bid that was acceptable, that would be the only liability associated with the transaction, so. At the end of the day, if things were, you know, crazy things happened in the market, and interest rates skyrocketed, and you decided you wanted to pursue other alternatives, the worst thing that could happen to you is you'd pay for a credit rating, and that would be it, so.
Is it worth $9,500 to get a credit rating?
Yeah, it is. It saves you, this is a longer term, it's, you know, over $1 million, yes. It's going to save you at least $100,000, if not more.
Pete, you were.
I made the motion, didn't you, didn't you bring up something else?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? Now, we proceed to vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side. Motion carries.
Thank you. I'm on the next item, too. I had contacted Jenny, week and a half ago, probably, about, I had received a call from an attorney for acting on behalf of a community asset foundation. They built and own the Lodge of Winthrop, the assisted living facility. They are looking to do two things. One is refinance existing debt on facilities in Winthrop, Mountain Lake, and Howard Lake, and Taylor's Falls, I believe. And they are also seeking new funding for a project they intend to construct, I believe in New Hope. When, they are a nonprofit corporation. When a nonprofit corporation issues bonds, they have the ability to issue tax-exempt debt if they have a unit of government that serves as a conduit issuer, it's called. That unit of government applies its name to the issue, and uses some of its $10 million in annual capacity to issue what are called bank-qualified bonds towards this nonprofit's project. It is not a financial obligation of the city, it doesn't impact your credit rating. If they went bankrupt, you'd have no liability with regard to payment on the debt they incur. What else can I tell you? It wouldn't affect your credit rating. It is simply a requirement by the IRS that if a nonprofit corporation is going to issue debt, they have to have a conduit, which, a unit of government that serves as this conduit on their behalf. For that service, most units of government charge some kind of fee for the hassle factor associated with doing this. You hold a public hearing, you see a pile of documents, this sick, but you have an opinion from an attorney in a big office tower in Minneapolis that says what I just said, which is that you have no liability to repay this, and it won't affect your credit rating. And for that, they're willing to pay you roughly $5,000 to act as their conduit for this transaction. They would be looking to you to do about $4 million, which I think is the New Hope project financing. The city of Howard Lake is going to do the refinance of the existing stuff, and that is about $7 million, and I believe the fee they've asked for is $7,500, so. If you have an interest in serving in this capacity, you would, at this point, be offered a $5,000 fee. You certainly have the opportunity to negotiate if you cared to do so, but that's what's on the table at this point. I'm not here to talk you into it. If you wanted to do it, I'm happy to help out in any way I can. What I can tell you, though, is it's not a financial liability of the city.
I guess my opinion is, we have enough of our own bonding issues, and I just, no reason for us to be involved in it at this time.
Well, is there, is there demand on our city staff time?
A little bit, just to put it on the agenda, and make sure you have the information in your packets. And your auditor might collect some information with regard to a payment schedule and stuff like that, but we can require that they put that together and deliver it, so.
I don't have real strong feelings either way, but if it's very little effort on the part of the staff, if, I mean, if they don't mind doing it, if it's just money coming in.
My concern is, I know what you're saying, but a staff of people who's like this always worries me. And there's definitely no reason for us to be doing this that's going to benefit the city, other than if I thought, and I can understand that, I would just as soon stay away from it. That's my opinion.
Rebanding down for a lower interest rate?
Yes, they're refin, well, part of it, again, there's $4 million, I think, going for a new project that they're looking for a conduit on, and $7 million is a refinance of existing debt. They're working with Piper Jeffrey, again, who funded the, or helped them fund the original project, so.
So would we still collect that money and make those payments to the lodge as we do now?
Yes, it'd be exactly the same. The deal doesn't change, essentially. That part of the deal, this is for their primary lending, that we don't have anything to do with, really.
Mr. Mayor, I agree with you, we, we're just going $1,500 into our street project, to so not get any involved more with bonding, but I don't know what the other people think.
Oh, make a motion if we don't.
I'll second it.
No, no, make the motion.
I thought you made the. I'd like to make a motion that we don't go with it.
Is motion made, not to go along with this, or second?
Second.
Second, is there any further discussion? Any further discussion?
I think it might be worth looking into, but I'm content to go with everybody else's.
Any further discussion? Now, we proceed to vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side.
Aye.
Okay, I'll let him know, thank you.
Thanks, Shannon.
Okay, John Sanitation, you're not.
I'm here to ask for a, ask for an extension on a contract. I want to go with the single stream recycling, which is, would involve another cart for every house, and another truck to pick it up, and. So I just, for putting the money out there to do that, I just thought a longer contract would be in order.
So currently, we have one cart.
Yep.
That trash goes into.
Yep.
We have the smaller containers for recycling.
Yeah.
And we each have one container, and that's glass, plastic, and cans, correct?
Glass, plastic cans, paper, cardboard, yeah. Yep.
And you're saying you're going to continue with the container for the trash bags?
Yep.
And then what's the new container?
It will be just like that. It'll have a different color lid, so you'll be able to tell the difference. And then you'll put everything in there. I have some sheets here, just some samples of what it'd be like, that I would hand out, along with the carts.
What's the reason with going to that? And my only concern is that I heard some negative comments about having another cart instead of sitting in the garage or something.
Yeah, well, it would be better, you know, for the wind blowing the carts, blowing the recyclables, you know, you have a lid on it.
I did have, just letting you know, after the newspaper ran the article about the Gibbon carts, I did have a few elderly people ask when we were going to get them. And I said, at that point, Jess hadn't talked to me about it, so.
So you're talking, you can pick these containers up with the truck?
Same, same truck that pick, like, no, a truck just like what picks up the garbage, yeah. Yeah, yeah, would still be true, too. But it would be, the recycling you would pick up every other week. It wouldn't be every week.
Would that eliminate Saturdays then?
No, Saturdays would stay the same.
So instead of picking up recyclables once a week, it would just be every other week?
Yeah.
On the same day as garbage pickups?
Yeah, same day, same time. Yeah, we, we don't want to, no, we don't want to change, change that.
Sanitation's going to pay for the new carts?
Yep.
And that's one of the reasons you want to lock in a little longer?
Yes, correct.
How long are you thinking?
I thought it would be five years.
There's no other terms that you want to change from our current.
The only thing that's in there is there's a weekly pickup of recycling which you'd have to change, but that's it, yep.
So there's no increase in costs yet?
No.
Have we just been doing a yearly contract?
Correct, just a yearly extension.
Because you have the right to renegotiate, but I feel they do a good job even with the costs, so I.
I do, too.
I don't think I want to reopen anything.
So then you, if we lock you in for five years, you aren't going to raise anything?
No.
We've been under the same contract with them since 2009. It's been doing yearly renewals since, no changes.
Yeah.
But that doesn't necessarily mean the garbage rates won't go up.
Yeah, because the garbage rates are your, you pay the tipping fee.
That doesn't, for recycling, it doesn't matter, or does that matter also?
No, it doesn't, no.
Recycle the same day?
Yep. Yeah, we're going to recycle the same day.
I mean, garbage and recycle?
Yep.
You said a different week, I thought.
Every other week.
Recycling is every other week?
Yeah, recycling's every other week, garbage is every week. Yep, but same day, same time, yep.
I'd make the motion to make the change.
I'll second that.
Is motion made and seconded to go ahead and accept our extended contract to five years? When would you act, is there any further discussion? When would you actually start with the new carts?
Well, depending on availability of carts, I'd want this done, for sure, by November 1st.
Oh, it is coming here?
Yes, for sure. No, no, as soon as, yeah, we can get the carts in and get them delivered.
Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Now, we proceed to vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side. Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Are we locked in for five years then, right?
Yep.
Except if their dumping fees change, that's the end. Jenny, I'll just get on you, I need you.
Okay, you're the man.
Good evening, council. I'm just here to propose a increase on the fire call rate. Right now, currently, we are 500 for the first two hours, then 500 thereafter. We would just like to change it to $500 flat an hour. This is our proposal.
So instead of 500 for the first two, it'd be 500 for the first, 500 for the second?
Yep, correct, correct.
Are there any, okay, these are just the rates of new curlicues.
Yes, this is.
The only thing you're proposing, you're just asking them to.
To change that, yep. That's the only change we are proposing.
How did we ever come up with $500 for the first two hours?
That is back from 2012. And basically, at that time, it's what insurance companies were paying. It's gone up over the years. There's a line item on your insurance that tells you what your insurance pays per fire call. And that's, I think that's how we came up that, correct, Lonnie?
Yeah, that's, that's one of the reasons, and then secondly, was, if you do the math, what we're paying the guys, that 26 guys are getting 10 bucks an hour on the call, and then they are, we took into account fuel that we're burning on the trucks. We're, we're burning out $500 an hour, especially on long calls. Real quick.
You guys have, provide available service to the community, I, I don't see any problem with it.
I move that we make the adjustment, the fire department recommends.
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded to go ahead and approve the adjustment. Is there any further discussion?
Troy?
Yes.
Do, we have to then, I don't know, are the insurance company automatically charging us $1,000? You know, I just get it and pay the bill, or should we just check on that when it's renewed and say?
I would think you should look at your policy.
We want at least $1,000.
See what it says.
Yeah.
For fire.
I would just look at your policy and see, but it's different from different towns, too. There's, different towns charge different amounts.
Most insurance policies nowadays cover up to $1,000.
Yep.
Like Julie said, you got to check your individual. Yeah, I don't know. I know when I got total coverage, but I don't know.
When you have calls, what is the, out of 10 calls, how many of them do you actually stay there for more than two hours?
We were thinking was more like, 90% of them, it's an hour or less.
An hour, 90%?
Yeah, that's kind of what, Jim was with the billing, that's what he'd, but now, he was going to say the last two calls, we've had, we've been there for three, four hours, so.
What hazardous, I mean, like.
Um, hazardous waste, just a chemical spill.
Oh, okay, it's not like if a house got lead paint on it?
No, nope, it's a chemical spill.
Do you guys recover most of the money that, that you bill for, for fires, or, or do we, or?
Jen, you?
Barb's?
Yes, there was just a couple that were outstanding this year, but.
When we had the meeting, then there was like two or something.
Most insurance companies go along with it.
Yep.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Now, proceed to vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side. Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
All right, there's one more, one more I'd like to bring up, too. We are discussing about getting a new truck, a new pumper. We are going to put a committee together at the end of this year to decide our needs, and then we will put it out for bids in 2018 for a 2019 delivery. So I just wanted to get that.
You'll be putting the bids out when?
Sometime in 2018. Yep. The truck that we are replacing will be the 1991 Schmähl pumper, so.
It's about time for that, then, right?
Yes, so, that's all I have, that's what.
All right, that's all, sir?
All right.
Have you had any questions on that?
The only question I got, if you get a different pumper, I want that truck for the street department, so I can update mine a little bit.
That's on record. So I suppose we're looking at, I'm just saying that so that you give us all an idea of where we're looking at.
Like 300,000?
I would say 300,000 plus. Gibbon, last year purchased. I would say three hundred thousand plus. Gibbon, last year purchased a, just single cab, brand-new pumper, two hundred and seventy thousand. Lonnie and I were at chief's convention in October. The inflation on a fire truck is four percent each year for brand-new trucks, so.
Um, I want to go to Jenny on the spot a second. Roughly, how much do we have set aside for that?
I was just thinking, I'm going to writing myself a note to check that tomorrow.
We've got some time.
Yup, yup.
I got it. We'll send Gordy to negotiate.
There you go.
I get a percentage.
It'll take him five years to actually buy it, though, like the plow, so.
Alright, moving along. Is there anything?
Yup, thank you, guys.
That was a compliment, though, Gordy.
Yes, it was.
Okay, the next thing up, Karen.
Karen, squad car equipment.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, last month, I, uh, we talked about the squad car, and, uh, thank you. And I just touched base a little bit. We did get that ordered from Ford, so it's going to be anywhere between six and twelve weeks. And regarding the equipment, I have enclosed two bids for you. One's from Emergence, um, Emergency Vehicle Services in Sauk Rapids, and the other one's from Guardian Fleet Safety in Clear Lake. So, uh, it's not completely apples to apples. The Guardian Fleet Safety, you would need, you would need to add another roughly about two hundred and fifty dollars for gun locks, which he didn't add, but that is on the quote from, um, Emergency Vehicle Services. Basically, I would like to go with, um, this, this Sauk Rapids gentleman for a couple of reasons. Number one, he's eight hundred dollars cheaper on labor, so that's something. His overall costs are cheaper. And this, this is, this is Matt Heinen's, yup, yeah, I did. Yeah, he's eight hundred dollars cheaper on labor, and he does free, uh, he will transport the vehicles for us, which for me personally is huge, because I'm the one, if there's an issue with the squad, or we need to get graphics on, or whatever, I need to transport it. Well, um, some of these places are a bit of a hike. For instance, Guardian Fleet Safety, excellent outfit, however, they're in Clear Lake. So, to be going that far every time we need something, if, uh, if I can get someone to come get the vehicle, that's, that's huge. So, um, I guess dollars to, dollars to donuts, it just makes more sense to go with this gentleman in Sauk Rapids. They both have very good reputation. I tried to get three. There was also a gentleman in Sleepy Island, he never got back to me, so we just have the two. And, um, I've talked to both of them extensively. I think they would both do a great job. But in the end, this gentleman's a lot less money. He was willing to give us a break on labor, which is why he's eight hundred dollars cheaper. Everything else is state bid. The, the, the equipment, it's, it's going to be state bid, so it's really going to be a wash. But, um, between transporting the squad and the labor, I really think we would come ahead. Yeah, that's where he gets, that's where he got his state bid. That's his supplier, so it's a bit confusing.
The last.
Um, it's Matt Heinen's Emergency Vehicle Services. And then, yeah, it says Emergency Automotive Technology, because that's the people who do the state bid prices for them.
Karen, if you're satisfied, why not save eight hundred dollars?
Well, that's what I think.
Does that include graphics, or that, that comes next?
Nope, graphics is going to be an extra five hundred. Yes. That includes everything, all the equipment to make it ready for the road.
Sir, does that sound better, or something?
Yes, that's, that's the plan. We are thrilled.
I'll be looking forward to seeing it, but not my rearview.
Yes, sir.
At the red lights.
Yes.
Alright, um, do we need a motion to accept this?
I'll make a motion to accept the quotation bid here in the front page.
Emergency automotive.
Emergency automotive.
It's not good. It says good through three-three.
I think he'll probably still be good with it. I'm just guessing. He really wants our business, so I'm glad, so I honor it.
We have a motion on the floor, and we have a second.
Second.
We have a second. Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? If not, proceed to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Okay, thank you.
Want to do the forfeit sale of the forfeit vehicle now, as long as she's here?
Oh, yeah, I forgot about that. Thank you, Jenny. Um. Uh, sorry, I don't have the paperwork in front of me, but yeah, we have a, we have a vehicle that we received the title back for forfeiture. And I was, uh, just wanted to have some dialogue with the council about how you'd like to proceed with selling it.
What kind of a vehicle?
Zach discussed with
It's a, it's a van.
Instead of doing the bid, maybe doing consignment out of Dave's Auto. And I did contact Dave, and I, I think he said he charges ten percent, um, ten percent commission with a cap of five hundred dollars. And if the car doesn't sell, they charge fifteen dollars a week for time and advertising, if we chose to go that route.
And the other route we have typically done, just put it up for bids.
We could take bids.
And another route
Excuse me, go to county auction. We could do Craigslist, we could do, um, the auction in Shakopee. So there's, there's quite a few options there. And I don't know, I mean, I think Dave's would be a good idea. We'd be supporting local. The only downside is if it's going to be sitting there for weeks, we're probably not going to make a lot on the vehicle anyway, and we have to pay him for, but it's
Don and I talked about today, too, if it ends up costing us money, if the vehicle doesn't sell, and we have, still have to pay him, then
Yeah.
We'd end up having
It depends on what you put on the vehicle, I may not agree as far as, I don't know if there's an estimated value on it.
I didn't look, Blue Book.
I guess I lost. What kind of a vehicle is it?
It's a squad car.
Oh, the squad.
No, it's, no, 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 this is a forfeiture, yes.
I was thinking about yours.
This is a, yeah, this is a
Typically, we have
Drug forfeiture.
A lot of money on the
No, last time, last time we put it up for private bid, and I think we made seventy-five dollars, we took a loss on it.
But the truck's a shot, too. Oscar bought it.
Yeah, but junk would have been more than that. Junk price.
Oh, is that pickup?
So.
That old pickup.
Oh.
Yeah, a lot of these vehicles are nothing to write home about, but
This one is halfway decent, though, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah, it's halfway decent. And I'm, I apologize, I forgot about that, so I did not look up what Blue Book is on it, but
I, I had a resident in the community just say, you know, it'd be nice since it was on Jasmine, or whatever bank, or what, so what, for local people to have a shot at it, instead of sending it to an auction somewhere.
Sure.
And that was just a, a comment that was from the community.
So Oscar bought it and he gave it back?
No, he's still got it.
He's got it, yeah.
So the question is, do we want to put it out at Dave's Auto, do we want to just put it up for bids, do we want to send it to an auction? There are, we're not great, so yeah, there's just a number of
I would say get rid of it.
Well, that's the ultimate goal.
I know, but, I mean, why do you want to, you know?
Well, if it's a halfway decent vehicle, and there's a reasonable chance of it selling, is it worth it to try?
Well, you can always reject a bid, too, if you think it's too
Gordy just said
We could try for a month out at Dave's, and just see if there's even any nibbles.
Reasonable period, and, you know, you're not out that much.
Yeah.
If you're going to sit there for a month, and it doesn't move.
What did Oscar pay for it, Gordy?
That pickup?
Seventy-seven.
Oh, we're not talking about the pickup?
No, no.
This is another, this is a van, it's a two thousand, I, I don't even know, it's a van that's sitting out there.
Yeah, it was a van.
Um, and, and maybe we just put a reasonable price on it so that it does sell, but
Well, I would think if, if we're going to have it out at Dave's, he would give us some kind of an idea. I mean, if he sells you
Yeah, I mean, he'd look up the value, and I think it's reasonable, so does, I mean, support Dave for a month. But I think if there's no nibbles after a month, I think it's, might be short-sighted to leave it sit out.
Probably, certainly.
Excuse me. Might want to go a different op, different route.
So, is, do you want to make a motion on that?
I would probably try it out at Dave's for a, a month.
Okay.
If it hasn't sold by then, then we'll come up with another plan.
I'll second it.
Yeah.
Okay, this motion to go ahead and try and sell it at Dave's, give it thirty days, and then after that, something else, motion made, is that your motion essentially?
Yes.
And second, is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? If not, proceed to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the RFPs concerning the comprehensive plan.
I'll go ahead and take that. Uh, council, the city's comprehensive plan was created in two thousand and eight. The rule of thumb is that a comprehensive plan should be updated every ten years to account for changes in the community, upcoming future trends, things like that. So that means that the city's comprehensive plan should be updated in two thousand and eighteen. So kind of to get ahead of the game for planning purposes, at the last planning commission meeting, we brought up that the comprehensive plan needed to be updated, and discussed two different general ways to update it. One, the planning commission could do it itself, or two, you could hire a consultant to do the update for you. Uh, we had that discussion at planning commission. The consensus is, is that it takes so much work and expertise to do the updated comprehensive plan, that the planning commission didn't feel that it had the time or resources to do it correctly. So, their preference would be to hire somebody to do that. Since, uh, what we are asking the council to do tonight is to authorize putting this out for a request for proposals, so we can see what the interest in the cost is for doing that. Our hope is that we can get the cost either late spring, early summer, and then use those figures as part of the budgeting planning, uh, later this summer and fall. And if the council, uh, does wish to pay to update in two thousand and eighteen, at least it'll be budgeted, and it's not something, some extra spending that you're being asked for. So if you authorize this tonight, you're not committing yourselves to anything, it's just we're seeing what the prices are out there. If you do like a price, you can approve it later, but if everything comes back too expensive, you can just say, we're not in a position to spend that money, and we'll do the project some other time.
We had that jobbed out the last time, didn't we?
Yeah, I nested it.
Do you recall what the cost was back then?
I do not.
It was pretty healthy, I think.
It's
Yeah, but this would just be an update, so it wouldn't be like a
They don't have to go back and gather all their
Well, they'd have to go ten years.
It was probably twenty to thirty thousand.
Yeah.
I think it's worth seeing what the proposals come back at. I think it's been ten years, our, our city, we need to know the direction we're going in. Especially with development, I think it'd be a good idea to have that up there.
Is it a big deal to do it?
It is a big deal. It's very time-consuming. Um, so, yeah. It's, it's something that it's probably best for an engineer to do.
Is there any further motion?
It's unmoved.
Motion made?
I'll second it.
And seconded. Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? If not, proceed to
I'd like one question. Does, does the planning commission have to go through with this with the person, or are we going to make changes to it? Who determines who makes changes, or?
Well, it, part of the, to update a comprehensive plan, it's about, it can be about a three to six month process. Includes public meetings, it includes meeting with the planning commission. Um, the, ultimately, the product that we get from whoever's hired will make proposals, but those proposals will come from comments from the public, comments from the planning commission. So, that's, it will give recommendations, but those recommendations will be based in grassroots communications as part of the process.
Okay. No further questions?
If there's no further questions, proceed to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, there's a support for the library's point.
No.
Oh, Coalition Against Miss Bigger Trucks.
Oh, I'm sorry. Coalition Against Bigger Trucks, uh, yeah, Against Bigger Trucks.
This is a real, yes, it is a real thing. I met with this Matthew Muir last week, and he actually had just come from Sibley County and met with, um, Tim Becker to discuss some legislation, uh, at the Capitol, allowing trucks weighing up to ninety-nine thousand pounds on state and county highways and bridges. Um, apparently, these trucks are not allowed on interstates. The federal government doesn't want them on their highways, but they're more than happy to push them out to our highways, and not provide us with any additional funding for our streets. And he would like support from us in the form of the letter that I sent along in the email to our legislators, saying that we are against this legislation.
I would move to support that letter.
I would also.
Motion made?
I'll second it, too.
Seconded. Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? If not, proceed to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Yeah, I think that's a no vote there.
Yeah, okay.
Now, you have it.
Alright, um, last week I went to the state Capitol with the regional library board. We sent a group of representatives, it was Library Legislative Day. So as a group, we visited all the legislators who covered the regional system. Traverse DeSous covers nine counties, so we had a fair number of legislators to, um, contact. There, there were two separate things going on, but the, the one that I would like to see if the council would support, there is a bill being presented, um, in the House and the Senate, which would increase funding for rural library services, which, um, hasn't received any increase in funding since two thousand and nine. Um, and even then, it was, that was a really incremental increase. Remarkable thing is, there are twelve region, library regions in the state, and they never all agree on how this should be funded and how the, how it should be broken out. They all agree. They've come to a, an agreement on, um, the, the funding used to vary, vary drastically by population and tax capacity, and there's a complicated formula. But what happened is, a lot of regions didn't know if they were, their funding was going to go up or down by sometimes, you know, a hundred or a hundred and fifty percent. So it was very hard to budget. The net effect for regions like us was that we never got very much, because even when our population went up, it didn't go up as much as the metro areas did. So, we were always fighting a losing battle. So, the template of the letter, like Gibbon just recently sent, um, said, the council's writing to show support on behalf of the following bills, um, which changed the funding formula for regional public library systems. It provides the first increase for these systems since two thousand and nine. This shift, the funding shift, will decrease volatility in the funding from region to region, and the rural areas in the state will benefit by less of the formula being tied to equalization. Our libraries provide valuable service to the communities, and we're grateful for your support of the bill. That's basically the essence of
We don't know what we would get, though.
Yes, we do. The, the proposal is for an additional four million dollars in the funding that goes out, and that would be split, um, according to the formula within the twelve regions. For our region in Traverse DeSous, um, I should know this better. I'm not exactly sure what ours goes up. I think, um, I don't have that off the top of my head. But it is a, it's a substantial increase, which will then help, because the money that the county and the city have already earmarked for library services, less of that money will have to go to the fees that are already set for, and, and that, this, the money that we're talking about pays for, um, the internet access, for the book delivery, you know, and all of those kind of behind-the-scenes backbone services that everybody needs, and nobody really thinks about.
I know, and only one other question. I, I'm not opposed to libraries, but it says, the agreement states what, what they will pay and what we will pay. Are we told what we're going to pay, or do we, do we?
Where you
Right here, right here.
That looks like still a consent agenda.
Oh, I thought I saw it somewhere, it said something that they will state what we owe them, and what, what, what we're going to do.
I think that was a county agreement for the county-state aid highway one.
That's not, yeah, because I didn't think there was anything set about, um, what we're paying.
But you don't have a definite figure, like, are we going to increase four percent or two percent, or?
Um, you know, I think for the Traverse DeSous region, it would be, and I'm not positive about this, I think it would be about a ten percent increase over what we've gotten. You know, and the You know, and the cost of things like the internet access and everything else, books and delivery has gone up.
We are charged for internet here, Jenny?
We get it, not, the city of Winthrop is not Socrates.
The library is separate, yeah. That's, it's provided that there's a complicated network of schools and libraries that...
So they don't pay the full fund like a resident would, or...
No, the federal government pays a large portion of it, and the state picks up the rest of it.
The remainder.
Mm-hmm. And that, this funding covers the state's portion of that.
Okay.
What do, what do we invest now in this project?
Nothing, really. What I, basically what I'm asking for is just a letter to our representatives. When, we visited representatives from all around our region, and every single one of them, with the exception of the two who cover our region, were very supportive. The one from Redwood actually authored one of the bills. Couple of representatives from Mankato signed on the bill in support, and we were unable to see Senator Newman and Representative Grunhagen visit with us for a few minutes and wasn't, he wasn't opposed to it, but he wasn't strongly supportive from all appearances. So I would just like a few extra nudges that this region would support it.
Do you want to make a resolution?
Sure. I move that we send a letter to our representative and senator, supporting the pending legislation.
Motion on tables, send a letter to our representatives. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? If not, proceed to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And will you take care of that letter?
Yes, I will.
Jump down to the, the discussion for the Army Reserve.
You wanted to get council input on what they, if we should...
What is the council's, the, on the...
When are they going to bid this?
The Army Reserve building is going to come up for auction in April. There, it is going to be open for about six weeks online. It's going to be an online auction, and the Realtor said there was going to be approximately two open house meetings, or open house events, where the building will be open and people can come and look and ask questions during this time. And he's had three calls, inquiries on the building already. And Kelly would just like to know, if we are going to put in a bid, next meeting, we will have to have a closed session to discuss how much, if we're still interested in bidding on it.
You know what the bids are that have been...
Nobody's bid. Bidding isn't open yet.
It'll be an auction.
It'll be an auction.
Oh, it's an auction, okay.
So, I mean, then he could go up at that auction, correct? I mean...
I'm not sure how it works.
Is it going to be sealed? We don't know if it's going to be sealed or not.
I honestly, not at this point.
I think they always allow you to up the ante, don't they, John?
But most of the time, but we just, we don't know what the rules are going to be.
You know, I had the feeling that the council really wasn't interested, but I kind of am, and I think maybe the public is. And I think, if they haven't opened houses, we should have maybe even a meeting of the town to say, if we were to purchase this building, what are some of your wishes for the...
I think that's a good idea.
And how much are you willing for the city to invest in the building?
Yeah, and how much are you willing to invest in this building?
We're going to have to do something soon. Jenny and I had talked about this, and I think we need to have some type of meetings with the public soon, whether it's just in the morning for coffee and then maybe another meeting sometime in the evening where people can come in, just to get their feedback. I know that, I've talked to a few people that have said, we are interested in it. The other side is, we have to look at the cost for the city, you know, not just the purchase cost, but the yearly update, getting it up and ready for anyone to use, how do we handle its use? I mean, is it going to be open to all the different groups? There's a lot of questions that come up.
That's what I say, that's why I think you need the public input in here a little bit with David.
When does this, when does this auction take place again?
Beginning of April.
That's not a lot of time. Will it be before our next council?
No.
Nope.
You could have a public hearing at the next council meeting, advertise it, invite people to come and speak with the council.
But it'd be too late, wouldn't it?
No.
Oh, what did you say? When is the auction?
After our April meeting.
Oh, it's after, okay.
Oh, after, okay, I thought you said...
And it'll be open for six to eight weeks, he said, so we have, yeah.
Wasn't the Realtor who was trying to sell it the last time asking way over six hundred thousand?
That's what the value at the county was. He thought if we offered two fifty, two hundred and fifty thousand, we could probably get it.
Those are crazy numbers.
No, but you know, when they had like hands, they wanted a million, and I don't know what they got, but it went far less than a million.
One thing he did also say is that the building will be sold with no contingencies. So if somebody wants to buy it and tear it down, they're more than welcome to do that, so...
Who's selling it? The government?
I like that idea of having some type of a public to come in at the next council meeting. I, I think it's also a good idea if we had some way to invite people to talk to their councilmen.
I don't know if people are going to come up, that's my problem.
It maybe wouldn't. I would, I would not be opposed to having something, putting something in a paper in a couple of weeks. To meet in the morning and then maybe another meeting and...
Yeah, I think that's a better deal.
And, and if we did something like that, do we have to, I mean, I would like the council to come up there if they can, but can it be, what's the structure on that?
Well, you're not making any decisions, you know.
You say going up there?
I'm just saying, say we wanted to go to one of these restaurants in the morning, put it in the newspaper, and there's more than three councils.
Just post it as a council work session, if you remember.
If, if more people would show up.
We'll have to decide, too, what we're going to do with it if we get it.
Well, that's, that's part of the discussion.
Well, that's part of the discussion.
People, somebody in the community might have a really good suggestion that we haven't thought about.
For the building itself?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's too much to just let go without really seriously looking at it.
I do, too.
Okay, so moving forward on this, let's go ahead and put it on the agenda.
We'll have a public hearing at the next meeting, and if you as a council want to hold a couple of work sessions with, during the month, just let me know when, and I'll post them. You know, you guys can decide that later.
All right.
Do I have to sit down at the coffee shop and take minutes, then?
I think you'll have to come down. You'll have to come to the coffee, coffee in the morning.
Well, you know, just talk...
What if Gordy wasn't there? I don't want to see any more of him than I already do.
We need to do one, you know, say at the coffee shop, but where would be another place to get people in the evening or before supper or something like that?
Tanker Bay.
It's always a possibility, but...
They have cards up there on, what, Thursday nights? They have cards out, Tanker?
Could be.
Basketball's over, I, you know, so there's no sporting events coming up.
I don't think we're going to get a lot of people to come to it.
Maybe not, but I mean, it's an opportunity. This, this is...
I think Hans is your best bet either way.
Yeah, I think so, too.
One in the morning, one in the night. All right, well, do you want me to just come up with some dates, or do you want to look at some dates?
Sure.
Just set something up.
Jenny will get something set up, but we will have that public hearing.
We'll let you take care of it.
Yeah, I'll put a public hearing on the agenda also.
You, too.
Very good. Okay, now, could we go through, can we, we have closed session to discuss negotiations.
We can finish the meeting and then...
That's what I was just going to say. Okay, administrative.
Okay. Boy, that's a long time ago I wrote this. The ag containment update. I have not heard back from Gary, so I don't know any more than I sent out in my administrator's report. The bill with the compromise language has been introduced. He didn't know when the hearing was going to be. It apparently isn't this week because he hasn't emailed me, I hope anyway, but it'll probably be a Monday or Wednesday, and it will probably be at eight AM. So he will let me know more later. Jennifer Winiger and I hosted, were day chairs for the Leading Sibley Together Group on Thursday. We had a really good time, the people were...
You did a great job. You guys, you guys did a very nice job setting that up.
Thank you. We toured Heartland, we toured the Historical Society, and we toured RS Fiber. And everybody each had their own favorite tour of the day, and it was, and the Historical Society was very glad to have us and show off the building. They do a really, a really great job. Let's see, the park committee met with the Lions, Gordy and Oscar down in the park. I think we have a pretty good idea of the location, or at least, you know, the corner of the park where we would like to see the pavilion sit. Now, the next question is, what do we want it to look like, and how much money are we willing to try to raise?
So where was the, where was the area that they thought?
Down by the tank, just east of the tank.
That makes sense.
East of the tank.
They have, they have a design, and I emailed it to you, I don't know who I'll send it to. It's a pretty basic design. It does incorporate the railings from the overhead, which I know everybody would like to see being used. But do we want to, you know, try to write a DNR grant to get some money? Do we, how much money do we want to raise? You know, the Lions is kind of taking the lead on this, so I'm kind of going by their lead, but if, you know, they would like to go with a grant, I think we could probably help them with that.
Did you have a idea, roughly?
The design that they showed me was roughly fifty thousand, so...
What were the dimensions of that?
I don't remember, I don't...
Is that the first one you looked at?
That's the one that, yeah, that you were...
That looks terrible.
I didn't think it was that bad.
It looked decent, you know, even if it cost a bit more. Hell, we looking at twenty, thirty years down the road.
If Gordy wants to spend some money, then I guess we better spend some money, because that doesn't happen very often.
Yeah, it doesn't take... It can make it look decent.
I know.
I agree with you. If they're going to do something, make it last for many years.
What was it, twenty-two by forty years?
But the city of Ely, that one came up, and Dave had designed...
I asked them how much that cost, and he said it's been there for over twenty years. He didn't know how much that cost.
Well, I brought Jenny into design. I thought it was about as simple as you could get. What did you tell me it was going to cost?
Oh, that one, oh, God, that was over a hundred, a hundred and ten thousand or something?
Yeah, and it wasn't not this.
Yeah.
It was concrete. I mean, you spent a lot of money.
And it was just a roof. There wasn't any walls or anything. But it was huge. It was really big. So anyway, I'm kind of waiting for them to, you know, talk to them about that. I attended the first MMU A Leadership Academy on February eighth and ninth at their office in Plymouth. There was twenty-five people there, and our first discussion was teams, how to work as teams. Our next one is May twenty-third and twenty-fourth, and it's about conversations. It's a really good program, and I'm happy that you guys let me be a part of it. We closed on the Larry Anderson property on February twenty-eighth. He signed all the paperwork, and he will be out by April thirtieth, so that's done. We'll have to decide, no rush, but at some point, what we're going to do, I have, the fire department did ask if we'd be interested in letting them burn the house, so just an idea there.
He's keeping the garage?
No, we, we would get, we get the garage, too.
Is that a pole garage, or what was that?
Jenny, I've never been in there, but I told Jenny...
I think it's a pole, it's a pole garage.
I told Jenny I'd like to move that down to the city garage.
Can it be moved, I mean?
I'm not sure that's the best place for it, but we'll move it somewhere.
I mean, from outside, it looks like it's a decent shed.
Oh, it looks like a decent shed, Jenny. I find somebody.
Yeah, I think it's a good shed.
Take it apart.
Yeah, we've had, we have had people ask if we were going to sell it, and I've told them at this point, no, we're going to keep it, so... Barbara and I will be at the MCFWA Conference next Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. The League of Minnesota Cities Legislative Conference is March twenty-third at the Capitol. Liza Donabauer, the administrator in Arlington, is going to be going with me. She's never been to a legislative session, and she has agreed to come and meet with the legislators with me and help promote our ag containment repeal bill. So I'm happy about that. Kelly's coming down for the legislative meetings, he's not, but he's not going to go to the conference.
How is that containment bill going?
Well, I haven't heard. Hopefully, I'll know more by the end of the week, so...
But it is going in the right direction.
Yes, it is going in the right direction, so it's been introduced, you know, if we get a tax bill, who knows?
But you said there was a compromise thing, too?
Yes, there was a compromise, but according to Gary Carlson, our lobbyist, and according to the county assessor that, who I talked to about this, we would get back essentially everything we lost. And in the negotiations, the ag companies were not happy with this compromise, so they didn't want to meet anymore. I'm not exactly sure how that process all went, but then the representative backer, who actually introduced the bill, said, "Well, this is the best we can do. I'm introducing the bill with this compromise," so that at least he can say he did compromise, so he has a better chance of this bill going through than...
Now, that bill, was part of that bill for the farm, for the people on the farms, too?
No, no, this is just for ag containment facilities.
Because they got a, a tax thing, too, last year, too.
Yeah, this has, doesn't have anything to do with that.
I thought it was all in one, all right.
No, but if you want, I can get you a copy of the bill. Troy Walsh was here last week to discuss loss control. He gave me a list of a number of things, mostly pertaining to data security and computer and technology stuff, which is stuff we don't really have a lot of policies on. So I will be going through that list over the next year and getting us where we need to be with that stuff, so... I've been cleaning house and going through the back room, and I cleaned out this attic, and there's a bunch of records that we can have destroyed, and they're coming...
Read a policy downstairs?
Yeah, according to the data, data practices, it's mostly utility billing stubs, old verified accounts, and just stuff that can go. There is a bunch of stuff that I did clean, too, but I have room for it all downstairs, and so when we clean out all the old stuff. They're coming Wednesday to shred it all. It's all downstairs if anybody wants to spend the day looking through it. The chamber had a special meeting this month. Ashley Multer, Chris Multer, who owns the Jerry Queen, his wife is working on having a traveling vendor show, and they are coming to Winthrop August twelfth. She's going to close some streets. I told her if she wanted to close Main and Second, those are county-state aid, and she would have to get permission from the county for that, and I don't know if there's a charge for that. If she closes Second Street from Main to Hennepin, those, that's a city street, and then Carver Street down to First and up to Third, that, those are all city streets, so we could take care of the permitting for that. She's looking at having a hundred and fifty-plus vendors come, and there's going to be food vendors, there's going to be entertainment, it's going to be an all-day affair, rain or shine. And there's actually two in June, two in August, I think, and one in September, and I'm going to try to get to one of them before they come to Winthrop, just, and a couple other of the chamber board members are going to try, just so we kind of know what we're getting into. But it has the potential to bring a lot of people to town, so I hope, you know. There is going to be room for, I think, twenty-five vendors that are local vendors, so they will have the opportunity to have local vendors. It's not going to be the same vendors in each area, and they are going to work with local restaurants if they want to have food that day at the event, so...
And the vendors are going to be...
They're not going to be home sales like Pampered Shaft or Sensi and that kind of stuff. It's all craft wares type stuff. If you've ever been to her store, it's going to be a lot of the stuff that she sells out of her store, so... And I think that's it. Oh, wait, I do have one more thing that came in today. The elevator guy came last week, and I have a proposal that I would like to get permission to approve. We need to have the traveling cable replaced for five thousand twenty-four dollars. The traveling cable supplies all of the electrical current to your elevator controls. This needs to be done due to damage to your current cable. We will use junction boxes in the hoistway to replace the damaged cable. And I was really glad it didn't fail today when I was hauling boxes on the elevator. So we haven't stuck any money into that elevator in years.
Is it safe to go down?
Yes, it's safe to go down. So if you guys could make a motion on that.
Is MEI...
Yes, mm-hmm. Yes, mm-hmm.
Nowadays, five thousand dollars isn't much for an elevator.
No.
Do you have any motion?
Yes.
Is that moved? Motion made, to accept the, um, go ahead with the board, then it's gonna be done in the elevator, is there a second?
Aye.
Second, is there any further discussion? Any further discussion of that, proceed to vote, all who's in favor say aye.
Aye.
All who's opposed, same side, motion carries.
Thank you.
Say, um, talking about closing streets, and maybe you've been approached, but I was over at Hans when, apparently his daughter's getting married.
Oh, yes, uh-huh.
Come over and talk to you?
Mm-hmm, no, but I, I knew she was getting married.
He wanted to know if they could close off a street for that wedding.
If it's Main or Second, he's gotta talk to the county.
I told him he had to talk to somebody, but I didn't know, so.
I'm sure Gordy will tell him tomorrow at coffee.
No.
All right, anything else, something like that, otherwise we're gonna.
I would think it'd be Second over there, so that'd be a county.
Yeah, on the west side of Main, that's county, yes.
EDA, has anybody had a chance to look at the, uh, the work, does anybody know when, uh, they, they, uh, they awarded the bid to Gail's Sanitation, do they know when that's coming down?
Uh, I didn't ask, sorry.
I don't think so, we just accepted that we just had the bids at the meeting.
Roll-off, the roll-off, they're doing it.
Oh, uh, that Ground Zero isn't taking it now?
No, they rebid it.
It fell through.
I thought I saw it too somewhere where Scott Blumhoffer was gonna talk to us about something tonight. I don't know, maybe not.
And we are recommending the armory that we did, of course, on that house.
Uh-huh.
All right.
And maybe you could invite them to one of your meetings, I don't know.
Oh, that's a good idea.
Scott or.
Yeah, maybe UFC too, or somebody.
They should be invited.
Maybe they make a donation or something.
Julie's on the EDA, so, and Lyle.
Yeah.
See what you prepare for them.
Okay.
City legal counsel, sir.
I have nothing.
Uh, Gordy?
I have not, on the streets.
And so what?
Paul has the, Paul has the report in here for the support braces, and you saw that, and he would like to go ahead and do the rest of them. And then, um, the electrical work that didn't get done last year, did you decide what you wanna do, all of it, or half of it?
Half of it.
And I guess we're gonna do half of it, and then he sent me an email with the breakdown um, by section, with a map of the different sections, so Mark's gonna get me an estimate, or did you talk to him?
He gave you estimate of, of.
Oh, yeah, the, and I included that in your pack.
At thirty-four thousand, but that's got no transformers, got no sexualizers, got no fuses, we buy all the materials, the wire, you're looking at another fifty to eighty thousand on top of that.
Do we do that, because we can do it cheaper than Claudia can.
Yeah, they'll provide one or two men.
Cheap off buying it.
And then if we go forward with it, um, there will be a pre-construction meeting to discuss everything, so. But, I mean, we've already approved the project.
Right.
You got anything to add to that?
Yeah.
Gordy?
Everything all right with that?
Anything else you wanna add to that?
No, those fine.
I mean, this, it's been planned for two years, it's just, I think we might actually get around to getting it done this year, so.
And you have time to be doing that?
It's gotta make time, that's all.
That's why I was doing half.
Well, he won't be doing locates this year, so.
You hope.
All right. Gordy, probably, we are looking at them, is there anything else, Gord?
No.
Uh, ambulance, uh, care is gone, cable commission is, and I saw.
Cable commission, is that, uh, include the fiber?
Yes.
Does anybody have any idea how the fiber is doing, are we holding our own?
They are absolutely holding their own, they had a hundred, what was it, a hundred hookups last month, and they're working on doing another hundred or more this month, so.
Yeah, I hope it's about twenty-five a week right now, about that wind it's only.
We never hear anything about it, and we've kinda stuck our necks out.
The last report they had for the Joint Powers Board was in January, and, um, we get a report quarterly from, um, Shannon, it's required to the Joint Powers Board, and they're meeting all their requirements, so.
Good to hear.
Yeah, we're often asked, and they say, I don't know a thing about it.
You know, and I, I don't know if I did update, uh, after the January meeting, I should, the Joint Powers Board, um, we won't meet again now until March or April, but we always get a report, and it's, it's looking good.
I think we were asked too, 'cause when they said they borrowed that money, people were wondering, what was?
Well, we just granted them money ahead of when we didn't borrow any more money or anything.
Right, we absolutely didn't, we just allowed them to borrow a little bit more.
Well, it's good to hear, I just pay my bill every month, I never hear anything about it.
Yeah.
Okay, there's nothing else, um, I believe I have to close our regular meeting.
Let's set up a work session.
Oh, yeah, 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 before we do that, you guys don't have to put it, set up a work session, discuss additional training for public works employees. Go ahead and.
Well, um, I got the paperwork to do the onsite, on-demand training, and Kelly and Don and I met and discussed it a little bit, and I think the council needs to sit down and, with Gordy, Joe, and Oscar, and talk about what's expected of them as far as all the, the training goes for the electric and possibly water and sewer department, and, uh, if compensation, how much they would be given for completing this training.
Incentives to get through the training.
Mm-hmm.
So, I would like to have a, a discussion, so, it could, it could take a while, I mean, once we understand everything, so what would be a good time for people, I see?
Just set dates, I guess, if we're alive, we show up.
I'm pretty busy, I don't know.
Oh, you know.
What nights do you not make supper?
Well, geez, I think we should meet down at Hans, and they buy supper for us too, when we, for this discussion.
We could, could we do something like this, say at four or five o'clock?
Works for me.
Sometimes it's hard, five, sometimes five is, oh, yeah, lots of times I teach, and it's, get out of school at four, ten, and by the time we.
I just don't wanna go late, you know, I would like to, or should we say five-thirty? Would that work, um?
I like six at earliest, but.
I can reschedule too, I'd prefer a Thursday, if we could, if we're gonna meet.
How does, um?
I could, I could make a Monday work too, if that's a lot better for people.
I'll have to check my schedule.
How about the twentieth, how, how would that work, twenty on the sixth, or, I'm sorry, at six on the twentieth of March?
Don't we have a, a planning commission meeting on the twentieth?
Yes, we do, at five, so if we had it at six, we could have it right after planning commission, well, we could have it at five-thirty, at five, five fifteen.
Five, five oh five.
Or could we set it on the twentieth now at six o'clock?
Let's do five-thirty.
Five-thirty, okay, so we're taking a big chance at Pete, thank you.
Jenny's got a email me.
Yes, I will remind you, Pete.
Delete it.
Yeah, that should be fine.
Five-thirty on March twentieth.
I'll be here for the planning commission meeting, so.
Yes, you will.
You'll have to corral me.
I will. Does that work for you, Gordy?
I guess so, I don't know.
Okay. And Pete, one more thing before, um, Barb phoned that transfer, for, it was a transfer from the ambulance checking to the general fund for utilities, so.
Okay, now can we?
Kelly, I got one quick.
Yes?
That firm land that Alan Borris is gonna pay the taxes on, is that for one year, or?
That's every year, every year, when we get the bill fro- for the taxes, we will send him an invoice.
Are you saying it's an ongoing contract?
I'm just asking.
Do you renegotiate that, or is it a five-year, ten-year?
It's year to year.
Well, which, the reason why I'm asking, why didn't you put in the CFP when you get double your money, or triple your money?
It, he, he's, he's part of the community, he has, he has been doing it for quite some time already, I mean, he donates the, whatever he gets, whatever profit he makes off of that, to different local communities, or different local, um, projects in town, so I mean, whatever money he's making on it, he puts back into the community.
Do we know that though, do you get a?
We don't.
He's pretty good about that.
That was an agreement that was made.
I'm just, I'm just saying, you know.
That was, that was an agreement that was made how many years ago?
He's pretty generous as far as.
How long, Don?
So, we haven't changed it from that agreement.
Like, five to six, seven years ago.
We've gone, I don't know if we ever went to court, but there was a lot of big brouhaha about that, a long time ago, about that should be our land, and taking it over, and now you're just kinda, I don't, it, it doesn't mean anything to me, but I mean, you know.
But hasn't that been the agreement?
We haven't made any money off of that land, ever, and now it's, we're not gonna make any money off it, but it's not gonna cost us anything, so, if it ever came to the point where it would cost us something, we would have to look at how, what we did with it.
What's land rent for?
I don't know.
Two fifty, two hundred.
And how many acres we got down?
Seven, eight?
Six.